All right, good morning, everybody. We're in a call to order, the emergency meeting. Call for this morning to discuss COVID policies and quarantine guidelines. Dr. Oates is unable to be with us this morning as he's at a conference, but we do have our assistant superintendents here with us. We come this morning with kind of heavy hearts right now because we're being faced with a staffing shortage in multiple school locations, lots of students out, and I know this board has been committed to having our students in the classroom as much as possible. And so I asked us to come together this morning so we can reevaluate our COVID policies, our protocols, and how we're doing things, and if there's a better way moving forward in the short term because of the way the toolkit is written to allow us to continue to keep our staff in our school buildings and keep our students in school as well. So I'd like to open the meeting up, just open the floor to my colleagues here. If you have any suggestions or any comments you would like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. I would like to hear, I spoke with Dr. Oates last night and asked that our head nurse, the president this morning, Ms. Wanda Willis, to give us an overall synopsis of where we're at right now in our school system with COVID-19.
Be honest and in a nutshell, just to summarize it, I'm just going to be honest and tell y'all just how it is. Right now in our schools, COVID hell has broken out, and every last one of them. Students, staff, the numbers are elevated. The dashboard does not reveal every single one that we have because the nurses are nonstop in the mornings with COVID, nothing but COVID all day long. And the quarantine has reduced to five days. When we find out that somebody is positive, a lot of times to go back and trace, they contact trace, but the quarantine is over. So numbers are being missed that week. It is awful. It is insane in these schools. The nurses are exhausted. It's COVID from the minute they step in the door to the minute we leave, and we've got nurses who are standing seven in their home every night. And I don't want to say that again.
Well understood, and I appreciate you giving us a very blunt overview of what we're dealing with. I know you and I have been in contact one-on-one the past few days. I think we're at a point where definitely we must take some sort of action. One, to keep our students safe, but also our staff. And I would like also if Ms. White or Mr. Cheers could elaborate on an email received, a staffing email that we received yesterday regarding the effects on staff.
Good morning, board members. I can give you some information regarding vacancies. This is specific to our employees that require substitute teacher, and so we do have to have those filled on a daily basis. Currently this morning, we have 160 total absences that have been submitted into our system, and we are currently at a fill rate of 39.4%. So only about 40% of those positions have been filled. Those include all teacher positions as well as EC teacher assistant positions. We've been tracking that data for the past few days, and essentially our averages tend to be that we can cover somewhere between 65 and 70% of our vacancies. So at this point with 39.4, that is concerning to us.
Is it true that you've had to send staff from the central office out to the schools to cover classrooms?
We have lead teachers in different positions throughout the district, and so what we've done that work at various schools is mobilize them to be at specific schools today.
I did notice yesterday that one school had 11 teachers out and another school had 13 teachers out. I know even at a big school like West Brunswick, 13 teachers isn't manageable from the substitute situation. So obviously, nobody's getting a planning period and that kind of thing, if they're even able to cover those classes. 13 teachers times three classes per teacher is a lot of classes.
I know we have principals covering classes at some schools here.
That was my next question.
Yeah, right now. You know, I think most of us agree that we don't enjoy putting masks on students. I thought the toolkit really pigeonholes us into doing that, or we're going to lose a lot more staff and a lot more students. I talked to a school nurse yesterday who was about in tears while we're on the phone that for every positive test she has, it sends a minimum of 10 people home. While, you know, I think the science on the masks is flawed. The CDC came out yesterday, I believe our colleagues at WCT reported that the CDC is now going to start requiring KN95s and N95 masks in place of cloth masks because they don't see the cloth masks working. I tend to agree with them. However, the toolkit and the guidance coming down from Raleigh, whether we agree with it or not, does put us in a curious position where we have to send a lot of people home whether they're sick or not simply because they're not wearing a mask. And I've said it before, and this whole board's said it before, we're committed to keeping our students in school because we know they learn best when they're in the building. And I think that we need to do everything we can to avoid going back to a virtual school concept because we're still working on digging ourselves out of that hole that we created a year and a half ago with virtual. That being said, these decisions are not easy, but the idea I had this morning, and I talked with a few parents and school administrators, and it is not something I enjoy saying, but I think we need to move to a workday for tomorrow and Friday, and also using the weekend in our day off on Monday that has already been scheduled for Martin Luther King Day. That gives us five days, which is, Ms. Willis, correct me if I'm wrong, that is the new quarantine guidance and requirement. That would give us a five-day reset quarantine period, so anybody effectively who's put on quarantine today will be back by Tuesday. That would get our staffing levels back, we have to get our students back in the building, and we return Tuesday with the masks on, so we're not sending as many people home until we get through this heightened level of COVID. Again, this is all surrounding the fact that the toolkit mandates us to send more kids home, more staff home, with masks not being worn. I don't like it, I know this board doesn't like it, but unfortunately, we were elected to these positions to make tough decisions that are uncomfortable at times, but if we're going to keep our kids learning, and if we're going to do what we're elected to do, which is provide a good adequate education in Brunswick County, I feel this is the best way to prevent us from going virtual.
It's, Mr. Berger, I ask, you know, and Ms. Willis, you may interject as well, Ms. White as well. You know, assessing our current numbers and obviously in discussion with the staff that I've also had, would it be a fair assessment based on our present path that we're going to empty our buildings here pretty shortly? I know that's a pretty bold assertion, but at the rate we're going, we're ending out quick from a staff perspective and a student perspective, and especially as Mr. Berger stated, with our current procedures and guidelines that's established in the toolkit, you know, it requires more quarantine with that. So is it a fair assessment that we're going to continue to empty our buildings? And again, be as blunt as you need to be. I just want to hear honest answers so we can make a very informed decision.
I'm just going to give you my honest medical opinion. I thought about this too last night, and I too came up with that same scenario that he did. I said, okay, we're now sending everybody out for a five-day quarantine. So I was saying if we could stay home Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, that's everybody on quarantine, and then come back with a mask. I just attended the North Carolina DHHS K through 12 COVID-19 response meeting on yesterday, and they talked about this very thing about the masks. They have just completed 21 studies December 31st, and they've proven that in the schools, if you put the mask on, they have the numbers. And I was waiting for them, they have not sent the actual powerpoints out yet, but the numbers show that the rates of COVID, they do decrease. So I'm thinking it's fair for us to start right here. I can't medically say, okay, it's going to continue, but this is a good way to start, clean it out, everybody five-day quarantine, come back with a mask, and let's see if you can load up.
Is Mr. Cheers with us or no?
He is.
That's fine. Ms. White, based on that question and answer, would you have anything additional to add to that?
I just want to reiterate that when we do have masks in place, it does keep more students in school, as we know that if we are all masked, and you can prove that, they do not have to quarantine with exposures as they do now, as well as especially for unvaccinated individuals. So that does, that was proven for us at the start of the school year. We were able to keep kids in who had exposures, but we had full masking at that point. So really, hopefully, we'll be able to get us back to that position where we've got kids and staff in schools because there is that opportunity with it.
Okay. And finally, I just want to say that irregardless of the opinion of the masks or whatever that may be, we're on a track right now that is going to lead us to no staff to teach children and no children to be taught. If we continue the path we're going. So I think my questions have been answered. Mr. Berger, I will go back to you at this point.
Mr. Robinson, good point. Voting for a mask or anything else, isn't that you're agreeing that the masks work or that you're believing that, it's the fact that we're keeping these students and staff in the buildings. I think most of the guidance coming out now, you can find an argument for or against anything. As I just said, you know, WCT said last night, that the CDC released that their cloth masks aren't really doing what they thought they were, and they're going to move to a KN95 and N95. Ms. Willis, you said the state just came out with new guidance that they believe the cloth mask is working. You know, we're being pulled in a lot of different directions here, but the set of rules we're being given to work with is the mask would keep these kids in school, and that's what I'm most concerned with. I know my own children do not learn well on virtual. Mr. Lemon, you have family who are active teachers right now, and I'm sure you could attest to that as well. Ms. Moffett, you and I both agree that virtual is not helping our students. Our higher-performing students were really hurt by a lot of that stuff in these high-level classes, and I think we need to do everything we can to keep these kids in the building.
In addition, you know, last week, we attempted to come back with masks on, and it just didn't work. So I think we had no choice but to make that hard decision you just spoke to and Mr. Robinson spoke to.
I think, Mr. -- Oh, go ahead.
I'm in favor of your recommendation, Mr. Berger, and I think we'll come back on Tuesday, we may have a shot to stay in school.
I think, Mr. --
Mr. Benton, go ahead.
I just wanted to say on virtual, my kids just tested positive while I've been on the meeting here, so I just want to say that I'm going to go ahead and make a motion on Mr. Berger's recommendation to go ahead and make workdays Thursday and Friday.
I'll second the motion.
I want to, I want to make a comment, though. I know there's been a lot of talk.
We have a motion and a second, just got to go ahead.
Yeah. I think we agree, you know, the masks are not, you know, like Ms. Willis said, there are studies that say they work, there are studies that say they don't work, you know. But I do want to point out a letter from the Department of Health and Human Services that states the toolkit is not a legally enforceable document. This is part of a January 5th, 2022, letter to Senator Deanna Bullard regarding the mask, and this state deserves some research on that matter. The toolkit is binding us to do certain things to our kids. So I want to have that investigated, why our county can't make decisions for our kids.
Well, I thought the toolkit was an executive order from the governor.
Well, this is a letter that was just released. So I want to, you know, have Mr. Green to look into that. I think what we're failing to do is talk about how this is affecting the kids mentally, socially, physically, everything. We are leaving out that portion of what's, how it's affecting kids. This has been devastating for our children. You have a five-year-old. She doesn't know the world without COVID. When she was three, everybody started, you know, distancing and wearing a mask. She doesn't know what it's like to live without COVID. That's devastating, you know. This is a virus we're going to have to live with. It's going to mutate, it's going to have variations, and I don't know that these are the answers that are best for our kids. I think it's very sad, I think that needs to be acknowledged. I saw eight kids last night at a restaurant, none of them were wearing masks, and I sat down and talked to them. They go to our local high school, and they looked at me and said, please do not put us back in masks. So I explained this toolkit that hangs over our head, and they said, well, we don't want to go virtual.
That's the same thing I hear.
I just want to validate what these kids are going for. And then we're telling parents how they're going to parent their kids medically. I don't like it, I don't agree with it, I can't, it's just something I can't support. But there again, we have numbers, and we're sending home kids who might be sick, you could be sick, we don't know if you're sick, but since you've been exposed to somebody who is sick, we got to make sure that you don't get sick, so in the event that you are, you might, you could be sick, we're going to send you home. That's where I have a problem with the toolkit. We can't see the virus, we can't identify it in the air, we don't know who's going to get sick and who's not going to get sick. And another thing that I think is sad that our culture is telling our kids is that they're responsible for everybody's health. You're a super-sprender. You have to keep your grandmother safe. I think that's devastating emotionally to a child, and I just have to say that.
I think it's fair to acknowledge what you're saying, for sure. It is not that I don't disagree with a portion of what you're saying. And, you know, it is unfortunate we're in a set of circumstances the way we are. You know, however, assessing it from our current situation and with what we have been offered or given to abide by, and I think Mr. Lemon was correct, it was through executive order, and we have broached this subject with Mr. Green previously about what's enforceable or not, and at the last assessment of that, Mr. Green had indicated that it was generally enforceable at the time through punitive action against us if we failed to respond to the toolkit.
Which we saw in our county.
Correct. And again, that don't say that I don't disagree or agree with some of the things in it. I definitely acknowledge what you're saying, but at this point, based on what we have available, the guidelines we have to use, and based on the information that's coming directly out of our school system and out of our community, we have gotten to levels of, like I stated earlier, we're going to have empty buildings and no staff. So, you know, we have to deal with the immediate problem, and I certainly encourage those that have concerns with what is coming down from the state to contact folks. You know, resources in our county, Mr. Miller, Mr. Eiler, you know, I encourage folks to reach out to those folks, express your concerns, because our hands are predominantly tied as a local board of education. And at this point, we've got dealt a situation we must deal with today, and I'm more than willing to work on the backside of this to try to make life better. I don't like the mask in consideration. As Mr. Berger stated, we're in a very unique situation this morning. We don't want to have to make such decisions. I, like you, have reached out to students. I've sat with numerous students, I've taught with them, families, but there's no denial at this point the impact that COVID-19 is having on our community. I can tell you, as like Mr. Benton just said, I have family members right now with COVID. I have two, one in the hospital for two weeks now. I don't know anybody personally, as being a native to Brunswick County and as much interaction as I have with the community, I don't know, everybody I talk with is being affected negatively at this point with COVID. I hope that its impacts are mild and we can move past this going forward, but the one thing we know certain about COVID-19, that it's unpredictability. That's the only thing predictable I know. And I wish I had a --
And I agree, and I know there's, I mean, I have like tons of friends, you know, that are sick right now.
Yes, worldwide.
I believe one of the school nurses, you know, reached out, and, you know, we can't for HIPAA reasons, but we have one in the hospital, a student. I don't know if he or she has been released, but, you know, it is concerning, it's real. But I would like to look at for future reasons, you know, if this is, has this changed as far as enforceability, and allow us to have a little more consultation with like our nurses and what's best for our county. I know that you guys, that's all you do. I mean, I talked to one of the nurses at the high school, and she said, it's all I do, I can't do anything else because of the toolkit and the contact tracing, whether we agree with it or not, it's all she does. And she's in tears, and she's stressed out, and, you know, she takes it home with her, and she wakes up with it, and she thinks about it before she goes to bed, and it's a sad situation that our kids are the casualty, and you guys are.
You're on point with this nursing staff. The nurses, we're killing our nursing staff. We must make a break at some point. You guys, you know, I've been in the medical profession as well for 32 years, I understand what you're going through, and you're at a breaking point, and it's time for us to say, hey, we got to do something, whether it takes us today, tomorrow, working on Robin's thoughts, or whatever we've got to do, if we got to go to Rock, whatever we got to do, we got to keep our kids' safety. Health and safety is our number one priority, and we'll take extreme measures to do that.
Ms. Willis, I do have one additional question. Yesterday, I spoke with Dr. Oates, because we had children being sent home on their fifth day of quarantine at lunchtime. So essentially, they're being sent home for two hours of quarantine, three hours of quarantine. And he told me, I think, I believe he spoke with you, that the health department here said down to the hour, they have to be quarantined. Is that true?
Finish the quarantine. I didn't say anything about two hours.
No, no, but that's finish the quarantine.
Yeah, well, you have to finish the quarantine.
Right.
And then day six, they can come back with a mask on.
And that's not something, we don't have the authority to enforce or not enforce it. That comes from the health department, is that correct?
Right, but let me tell you something, we have not faced that until these numbers have gotten somehow, like I just told you, the numbers are so high till we can't get this, some schools still don't even have a nurse. So the nurse that's in that school wants the contact trace, sometimes the quarantine is over. So we had to ask the health department, okay, what do we do when there's a day left? Quarantine a quarter day, and then come back day six. They said, finish the quarantine, and then mask on basis.
So it's crazy, as parents, and we're going, wow, we're sending our kids home for two hours of quarantine, drawing a parent out of work, and they're going to lose income for the day. To avoid that situation, putting the mask on keeps the parents at work and the kids in school, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Because I agree, that's a crazy situation. However, we don't hold the authority, our nursing staff doesn't hold the authority on that, that comes from the health department.
Yes.
And the health department is governed by the health board and the county commissioners, and also the state-level DHHS.
That's right.
So I want to make that clear, because that was a crazy situation. I know that we all got phone calls on about it yesterday, you know, this two hours of quarantine, and it's because the testing is such a backlog, but we're literally following the rules that have been handed down by our local health department all the way to Raleigh.
Correct.
Can I ask you a question about the testing? As of December 31st, there was a test that was, you know, said to not be recognized any longer, and what test are we using for the Mako Medical in our school?
We're using the PCR test.
Okay, so which one, you know, because this is out of my --
So there's a PCR test, and then there's the rapid, and some people refer to the rapid as antigen, that's the same thing.
Right.
Rapid and antigen is the same thing. What they're saying right now is that they are finding that the rapid antigen test is not picking up on the one.
On the what?
The one that's going on right now.
Okay, so, but for our testing purposes, we are using the PCR in our school system. Okay.
And we usually get a 24-hour turnaround, but because the numbers are skyrocketing, we can't get that turnaround right now. It's like three or four days turnaround right now.
Right.
And we're also experiencing some delays in getting additional test kits because the rates are so high that need to be assessed, and then they are experiencing a backlog of getting the assessments back to us so we can turn that around. And their website is struggling in keeping up with the traffic, and so there have been some delays just like the community has experienced, even with our local vendor. So we've had some bumps along the way as we've come back.
Because we use that color, correct?
Yes, yeah, Mako, and then colors is the dashboard.
And they talked about the test yesterday, they did mention this too. They're now using and sending out tests that the date on the test has expired, but they checked to see, and they said that they're still legit, so if we receive test kits that has an expired date, we are to still do tests. They said, okay, that's how desperate it is right now.
Yeah, because there's a shortage of testing, yeah.
Just like we have positive, COVID-positive healthcare workers working in medical facilities in areas of the country. I don't know if it's in Brunswick County, but, so, you know, the goalpost keeps moving as Ms. Moffett has alluded to in previous meetings.
Mr. Berger, I probably know we're about to have to call this question here pretty shortly. I know we could discuss this quite in depth, because there's plenty to talk about with this situation. I did want to do a couple of final things. Mr. Cheers, I know you've joined us back. We have spoke with Ms. White pretty in-depth here. Is anything you would like to add to inform us? And again, you know, having as much information available and getting it out is imperative. Is anything you could add or be willing to add to this conversation?
I was following along online, boss, back there, and I just agree with what you're saying, you know, we're struggling, as Ms. White said, we've got principals covering three classes at a time at the high schools. The fill rate that she mentioned, it's the same that we're seeing there. We've really got to keep the kids in school. That's the goal right now, so it's a triage measure that you have to take to keep that happening so that a short break, and then we're able to return next week and move forward would be a great situation.
Got you. And Ms. Willis, one last question on my behalf. I know I've said this probably two or three times so far of being my last question, but how is, you know, we preach wearing this together, and we are, how has our relationship been working out with the health department? I know it takes some inter-agency cooperation to work this evolving pandemic as it relates to the school, but how is our relationship working with the health department? You know, it's one thing for us to be here as a board, and I'm sure the board of commissioners is probably watching us this morning, but they have a role in this as well, so we're going to truly work this together. How is that relationship working out? Is there anything that we need to do as a school board in communication with our commissioners, health services, that needs to be put on the table and dealt with? How is that relationship working?
I think our relationship with the health department is working well.
Good. It's good to get that out there.
They've been very helpful.
Good, because we're still getting, you know, as school board members, and I'm sure staff, we're still getting that question, the role of the school system versus the role of the health department. I know the general public still sees some confusion of what those roles are. Would you just briefly summarize what that role is between the systems and how it works?
Well, when it comes to COVID.
That's exactly right.
When it comes to COVID, the toolkit is from the DHHS, but throughout that toolkit, let's take a look, it constantly tells us we have to consult with the health department. And we do that. We do that very thing, I mean, they fix letters for us to send home with the kids. I just did that last week, got an English copy and a Spanish copy, so any questions, we constantly call. Our district COVID nurse is in contact with them all day, every day. I too am in contact with them, just never had a problem. But anytime we, anytime we look in the toolkit and we come up with a situation, because situations arise where the COVID nurse will call me, and I'm like, huh, we need, you know, somebody higher than us to take a look at this. So we'll call the health department. The health department, if they can't answer, they will call their state contact, and they get back to us, and we work it out, and we move on.
Got you. So we, that, parents still can reach out, both agencies will give information when there's confusion or misunderstanding.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
But, you know, I know it's going to be hard on the parents. I mean, here we are, throwing them a curveball, hey, you got to have some childcare tomorrow, you know, because it's Wednesday morning, and tomorrow your kid's not going to be in school, you know, from your recommendation. But to separate them and keep them at home, since we can't see it and don't know where it's at, it's going to be effective to get them apart, and with, thankful with Monday, we already have that as a holiday. That's kind of a plus for us, so.
And this is better than having to go virtual, than be home every day for God knows how long.
And, you know, that's why I felt it important to talk with the kids last night, just sat down with them, and they're like, can't go virtual. I mean, and I'm like, well, unless we do this, A, B, and C, you're going to be virtual. And they're like, okay, well, if I have to pick the lesser two evils, do what you have to do. if I have to pick the lesser two evils, do what you have to do. I don't want to go virtual because I, that's isolating. That's where the mental health aspect of the kids come in. Ms. Quinlan, you know.
That's more detrimental.
That is detrimental, what we're doing, you know, what's happening to our kids. And that's why I made the statement earlier. I really fear what this is going to look like in five years for our kids. Like, what are the long-lasting effects? And so to keep them in school, getting them educated is so important. I don't know that it's optimal. Education's not optimal with a mask on, especially for little kids learning to read and to understand phonetics. We got to get this streamlined. We got to get this to go down. And, you know, apologies to the parents who have to find daycare tomorrow. It's a tough situation.
It is.
It's bad.
And I would think also that this is not a board that wants the mask.
No.
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 That's not where we are. But unfortunately, we're really between a rock and a hard place right now.
Yeah.
Have to make some, like Mr. Barger, there's some hard decisions that aren't easy, so.
And I think the virus is going to spike naturally, and then it's going to go down. That's what viruses do. We're just caught in a crossfire of a spike right now, whether we, no matter what we do. And, you know.
We've tried the mandate. We've tried the optional, you know. We're, you know, and like I said, we've got physical effects from COVID. We've got the mental effects from our protection measures. What a situation we're in. And I will say this, you got a board here that's committed to trying to do everything we can to work with parents, be responsive, and be responsible.
Yeah, I agree with you, but none of us sit up here and.
No, absolutely.
I mean, nobody wants to do it. Nobody wants to do it.
I think you got, you know, this is a board where it's as approachable as possible. I know other boards in the state are, you know, one thing to another. But I just want them to know, parents and caregivers to know, we're doing everything possible, and we're open to trying to work with everybody to reach a, hopefully, a positive, long-term goal here.
And I think that's why our phones, I mean, I spent from the moment I woke up yesterday until, I mean, I was on the phone at 2:00 in the morning.
You're at both, we're going back, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's, I think, because, you know, we're really trying to be approachable. We're really trying to hear both sides. We're really trying to understand. And I want parents to feel like they can reach out to you and to you. I mean, I sent you an email yesterday trying to help a parent. And you guys are very responsive, by the way. Thank you. I know you've been extremely responsive. And, you know, I just want to say that I really believe that this panel sitting up here has the best interest of the kids at heart. You know, it's not fun to be here. It's hard to be here. It's hard on the kids. It's hard on the staff. But with the protocols that are in place by this toolkit that we're going to look into, today, we have no options. And I don't want to go virtual for these kids, because I think that's worse to put them in a room behind a computer, behind a screen, when we know that 70-plus percent of kids do not learn remotely. It's, and Ms. White can probably say, it's tough. It's hard on kids.
You know, we obviously, that needs to be our last resort, is moving to kind of a long-term remote environment. So this motion on the table should help us avoid that, knowing what we know today.
Because if we don't, parents are going to be out of work even longer.
Right.
Because we do have elementary-age kids who cannot be at home alone. We don't just look at high school or middle school.
And special needs, you know.
Yeah.
I can't, you know, I can't leave those kids out as well. They, parents, like I said yesterday, I can't tell you the number of parents and caregivers and grandparents that I've talked with in the last 24 hours. You know, I wish I could offer them a solution, a good solution, long-term solution. But I just don't have that at this point. And we're going to do the best we can to get through this.
Well, we go post-moon too. And then we don't, we can't predict.
The future.
What's going to happen next.
I would like to plead for the board to communicate with the parents. Parents can help us as well. When these children are at home, have them do what they need to do at home as well, and not come gate me the other without the mask. That would help a lot. We all have a fight in this.
Yeah.
And if they're sick, do what's right. Stay home.
Keep them home. Yes. So I just, I just want to be heard with that. I do thank the board for letting me here today and what you're doing today.
Thank you.
Yes.
And, you know, that's the hard part, because you see them at school, and so we're going to say, you know, there has to be a mask.
Right.
And then they go home, and you see them, which they're kids. I get it.
I get it too.
I get it. But that's the hard part, too. You know, they're going to go and be together without a mask, because I'm not at school, and I'll have to do it now. So that's an obstacle as well. I mean, I see it all the time. I have teenagers, so they're in my, you know, they're in my realm, they're in my scope all the time. I watch, I look, I see them. I mean, I had a kid that I talked to at a basketball game, and they said to me, I have to wear a mask at school because my mom makes me, but she dropped me off, and she doesn't know I'm not wearing one right now. I mean, they're kids, you know, so.
And I don't propose what we proposed lightly. I'm going to see if Mr. Lemon wants to babysit for me tomorrow.
I told you I'd take your kid.
And, you know, bringing up the athletics, I don't want students, you know, basketball is going on right now in winter sports. I don't want them out there running around with masks on either. So we have a motion and a second on the table. We need to make another motion to address that. But my intent was not for students to be running around on the court with a mask on. Also, we're not shutting down the renting of our buildings. So Parks and Rec can still use our buildings, and whoever else has been using our buildings. We're doing this simply because we want to keep students and teachers and our staff in our buildings as the toolkit states. So athletic events and stuff like that aren't really the issue with this right now. I just don't want kids out there running around with a mask on playing winter sports.
No.
For a review motion and a second on the table, I think we've talked about everything we can talk about at this point, without any further discussion or unless there's further discussion, go ahead and call for a vote. So all in favor of the motion on the table to make tomorrow and Friday workdays, and also resuming the masking. And then they'll come back on Tuesday with masks as well, and not to affect the athletic events. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tori, if you could note that was unanimous vote by this board, a 5-0 to approve the workdays and the reaplication of the masks. And unless there's any further comments, I let the call for adjournment of the meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Levin, second by Mr. Bennett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.